Good evening and welcome to the December 6th session of the Town Council. If you would mind, please join us in the Pledge to the Flag and I'd like Boy Scout Max Townsend and Sidhant Donaraj please lead us in that.
Please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with. The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just have a few announcements and those are meeting dates. On Thursday, December 20th, we have a regular council meeting on March, I'm sorry, Monday, January 7th, we do have a budget meeting at 6:00 PM. Thursday, January 10th will be a regular meeting at 7:00 PM and Monday, January 14th will be a budget meeting at 6:00 PM, all here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Eileen, did you have any announcements?
The rescheduled tree lighting will take place this Sunday, December 9th, at 4:00 PM at the Abbot Griffin Park. There's a reminder that the winter parking ban is in effect and no vehicles can park on the streets from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM until April 15th. The Police Department is still collecting non-perishables for the holiday food drive. Items can be dropped off at the PD lobby. Thank you.
All right, Paul, did you have an update on the Highway Garage?
Yes. On Wednesday, this past Wednesday, we got delayed, a little bit of bad news on the Highway Garage where it's not bad, but we're not going to be in by December 7th tomorrow. So, it's a little past my deadline on November 1st, but we'll be in hopefully by the beginning of January. There's been some items in the garage that have been backordered, not due to anybody's fault except the companies that are shipping them have delayed shipment and the decision kind of has been made that we really don't want to get into the Highway Garage until we can bring everything into it at once. So, we're not bringing old stuff in and throwing the old stuff out, getting the new stuff, so. They're working diligently. Our contractor, Turnstone, was, he could tell that he didn't like presenting that news to us on Wednesday because he really wanted us in and they were all geared up to turn over the keys to us by December 10th, so. Hopefully, we'll get what we need to get. They're continuing to do what they need to do and they'll just wait for those parts to come in that they need to finish the job and once they're in there, they'll come in, fix that. On a good new, and good news, is that the pumps, the gas pumps are going to be a little bit ahead of schedule. One of the parts that would come in that we needed has arrived and is sitting in our vendor's warehouse and he's going to be in the next week to install that so that we can start the gas pump renovation down there. And another bit of good news is that it looks like the roof's been done on the old Highway Garage. The siding is going to be going up in January, so that project is moving ahead. That portion of the project will continue to move ahead. They have to kind of time it because they can't really do a lot of work in there until we get into the new garage, but it is progressing. If all's said and done, we should be in by January and then they should be wrapped up, I said January, and they should be wrapped up by the middle of February, so. But the project is moving along and it is a little bit under budget, which is always a good thing.
Always a good thing.
Oh, yes, we're coming in under budget of the $3.3 million bond.
Paul, the gas pumps.
Yes.
I don't remember in the plan, I know you went, we went over them when they first, when everything got approved, but are they covered, are they covered pumps?
We looked at covering the gas pumps, but we decided as a group, due to the age of the tanks and the cost of covering them, it kind of didn't make sense to do the canopy until we make a determination on what we need to do because to cover the gas pumps, we'd have to rip out all the concrete. And then, when, if the tanks needed to be replaced, we'd have to rip out the concrete again. So, it didn't make financial sense to go through and do it now and then eight years from now having to rip up the concrete again. So, we got pumps that are supposed to be weather tight and last in the weather and the new system, as you remember going, filling up, punching in and things of that sort. The new system's also weather tight now.
Thanks, Paul. And Counselor Haley and Koenig, our excuse for this evening, which makes me feel a little lonely here, but.
Don't get paranoid.
So, comments from the press and public. If you'd like to address the council, you could step to this mic or the table right here. No? No, see, no, we'll move on. First item under recognitions, resignations and retirements has been postponed, had been postponed from our October 11th meeting and that is presentation of an award to Assistant Chief Brian Borman in recognition of his retirement after more than 24 years of full-time service with the Town of Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department. Brian had retired on September 21st, which is why I didn't recognize him for a moment because he's in civilian clothes, so.
I'm stealthy.
So, Paul, come up here and I think that, I'd like the chief to join us.
Sorry, I didn't recognize him either.
It's working.
For your time with us, Brian, which we've truly appreciated, it's a plaque states that presented to Assistant Chief Brian L. Borman upon the occasion of your retirement from the Town of Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department in recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for more than 24 years. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the Town of Merrimack. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, July 11th, 1994 to September 21st, 2018, presented by the Merrimack Town Council. Thank you.
Okay, my turn. When I first met Brian, I didn't need these. Neither did he, but we have matching pairs now, so. We buy them by the case, we share back and forth. As stated, Brian has been working for the Merrimack Fire Department for 24 years. He was hired in July of 1994. He was promoted to Master Firefighter in 1999 and then to Lieutenant in 2004. He's promoted to Captain in 2008 and then I was lucky to have him promoted to Assistant Chief of Support Services in 2013. Brian made a huge, huge contribution to our department organization and moving it forward. One of the things that I like to highlight is that he designed and put together a hiring process that allowed our department, okay, to sort through, I want to talk, I'm going to say hundreds, okay, of applications that would come in for a position. He designed a testing process that was a practical testing process that would determine that common sense, that ability for a firefighter to do a firefighter's job. He did a written process, an oral board process, and then finally, a chief's interviewing process, okay, to find the best people, okay, the best firefighters, the best EMTs, the best paramedics, okay, to service the people of Merrimack, okay. It was a daunting, daunting task, okay. He would come into my office and said, "How about this?" I said, "Are you kidding me?" "Oh, no, I'm not kidding you." "Okay." So, we went through the process. He started the process, worked the bugs out of the process. That first year we put the process in place, I'd never seen a guy run around so much in my life. He was at every station, every testing station for the whole week, okay. He had to lose 25 pounds running around, but it found him again, he said. Okay. That was just one of the contributions that he did to the department, okay. His experience being, he's got a bachelor's degree from Anna Marie College, he's an EMT, he's a company officer, two, three, two. He's a Certified Firefighter 1, Certified Firefighter 2, Certified Firefighter 3. He's a hazardous technician. He was a past president of the local 93 Union for our firefighters representing them in the E-Board and also a member of the E-Board on the International Association of Firefighters and for 2903. He has a great family, wife Becky, okay, son Jason and Matt and Lizzie is the two children, he has twins, okay. So, he used to always give me grief about his twins because he had one child and having two, he had two, okay. Well, I have one and every time I would complain about my one son, he would come up with the stories that were amazing about his two twins. I'd feel really bad and I'd never complain again, okay. But, no, all in all, Brian was an asset to the organization. We hated to see him go, okay. He has great contributions to the organization, became a very good friend of mine, okay. I respect him immensely. He's now working for Fitchburg State College doing emergency management type operations there. They will love him. I know they're going to be happy for his work that he's going to do there. And Brian, congratulations on retirement.
Thank you, Paul.
So, I just wanted to thank you for the recognition. Wasn't an easy decision to go, but, you know, it was probably time and it was a perfect opportunity for me to go, but I wanted to just simply thank the Town Council, thank all the, my fellow employees throughout the Town of Merrimack, most specifically the Police Department and all the work over the years with them, the citizens of Merrimack for allowing me to serve them for 24-plus years, but most specifically, the Fire Department and the firefighters because I had the opportunity to work with some of the greatest professionals in the fire service in the state and all around, so thank you to everybody and thanks for the recognition.
I had the chance over the years to work with Brian from his being a firefighter through his climb throughout the ranks and various scenes, whether they were accidents or fires or whatever, and the guy's a consummate pro and I always respected him and he always made great decisions out on the street and I'm happy for you, Brian. Thank you.
I was going to say you're jealous, but you have retired too.
Yes, Eileen.
Brian. Hi. I just wanted to say in front of everybody how much you really are missed here. As you know, we were going through a lot of, I was fairly new and, you know, getting used to everything and we talked and did interviews and all that kind of thing for the Assistant Chief position and your practical experience, your hands-on experience and your down-to-earth, no-nonsense manner made an enormous difference between, you know, bridging the gap between the white shirts and the, they were red shirts, blue shirts, whatever, I don't know, but you know what I mean, management and, management and the rank and file and I just, you made an enormous contribution to an already good department, so I just want to sincerely thank you from the bottom of my heart and we really will miss you.
Thanks, Eileen. All right, next, on the agenda, recognition of full-time years of service to two employees. One, Kathy Nado was with the town for 30 years. She won't, is unable to be here this evening. Her date of hire was October 3rd of 1988. That's a few years and so, I don't, I don't know if she will be attending or if we're just going to be, make sure that's taken care of.
Actually, I think that Assistant Chief Duke is going to take the clock with him when he leaves tonight.
Oh, perfect.
And give it to her tomorrow.
Okay, very good. And then, and that's, we have Assistant Chief Matthew Duke, keep it formal, I suppose. He has a 20-year plaque. His date of hire was November 23rd of 1998.
We have here a plaque, 20 Years Service Award presented to Assistant Chief Matthew J. Duke in recognition of 20 years of service as a full-time employee of the Town of Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department. It is a pleasure to present you with this plaque. We wish to extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance and dedication to duty, November 23rd, 1998 to November 23rd, 2018, presented on behalf of the Town Council and the Town Manager.
One Assistant Chief goes, one new one comes in.
That's right.
Matt was hired in 1998 and here we go back to the glasses because I can't see my writing. There we go. He was promoted to Master Firefighter in 2003 to Lieutenant 2009, Captain in 2014 and then I had the honor to promote him again as Assistant Chief in November of 18 this year. Matt is a Certified Firefighter 1, 2 and 3, Hazmat Technician, Company Officer 2, Advanced Emergency Medical Technician, he holds a degree in fire science. He's also been the Secretary Treasurer of the Professional Firefighters Union. He was Firefighter of the Year in 2001 and Firefighter of the Year again in 2014, so now you can see why it was easy to pick him as Assistant Chief, okay. He has several committees under his belt. He's part of our Apparatus Purchasing Committee. He's actually gone through and bought our last few fire trucks, our foresteries, our last boat that we purchased and with his expertise and attention to detail, what do they call that? No, I'm not going to. Something reten, we're not going to go there. Okay. He has that knack to order the right truck with the right equipment for the right price and then when the truck comes in, he's the guy sent down to the manufacturer to make sure the truck was right and they hate him. Because he is very meticulous and what we order is what we get for the community, okay. Does a fantastic job. He's also a member of the CQI Committee, Continuous Quality Improvement Committee, okay, and what we have is, Merrimack Fire Department runs fire, rescue, we run the ambulance service, so all transports to the hospital, paramedic level, advanced life support, basic life support. We have the building department and we also have the health department. Well, part of the CQI Committee is on the ambulance side and what we do for every advanced life support call, we ensure that we review every call and he's a part of that committee. And if there's anything that could be done better or may have not as done as good as it should have, requires additional training, he writes up the outline for that and puts it into place along with the committee and ensures that if something can be done better to the citizens of our community, it will be, okay, to protect their lives. So, again, another excellent committee. He was again also a part of the hiring process with the Oral Board and Oral Board Panel, so when Assistant Chief Borman put together these different panels in the hiring process, Matt was a part of that Oral Board that ran the Oral Board and asked all the questions that nobody wants to answer, okay, and they were lengthy. He also has wife Lisa and a son Jason and the funny thing now is they're not here tonight because they're enjoying vacation in Florida. I had to dig that to Matt. I think they're at Disney, I think so, I'm not quite sure. But bringing Matt on board was a great opportunity for us. As I said, he's been with the department for a long time as Lieutenant, as a Captain. He's proven his leadership ability, he's proven his ability to get things done and he's going to continue that process as he moves along as Assistant Chief. One thing I asked him the other day is, "How's his notebook coming?" And he says, "Well, if you quit giving me stuff, I could probably get something done." Town Manager likes me to hear that. Okay, but I have all the confidence in Matt, he's going to make an actual Assistant Chief and is going to move the department forward within the future. Again, Matt, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, appointments. The Council to Consider Life Scout Sidhant Donaraj's Eagle Scout project request to build a kiosk at the Sklar Waterfront Park that would provide information to its visitors. And welcome again. It's common. What's that? Oh, you, did you want? You can, whenever you want to start, if you want to wait for that, that's great as well. Perfect, not a problem. Yes. It always does. You'd think we'd figure that out and jump on it a minute or two early.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sidhant Donaraj and I'm from Troop 261 in Nashville. You may be wondering why a person from Nashville will be here presenting in front of the Merrimack Town Council. The reason is because I grew up in Merrimack. However, my brother joined the Nashville Troop and as I grew up, I was able to make friends with the Scout Masters and also the Scouts and this inclined me to join the Nashville Troop. However, my love for Merrimack is still there and I want to show my love by doing my Eagle Scout project in Merrimack and kind of giving back to my community. So, for my project, I wanted to build a kiosk that in front of Sklar Waterfront Park, sort of Sklar Waterfront Park that can provide information to visitors. For the design, for the location, it will be right at the beginning of the entrance. In the beginning, if you've ever been there, there's an island as soon as you enter and where I thought would be the best was putting the kiosk right in front so it's easily accessible for any visitor as soon as they enter and it's in, it's right there, everyone can see as soon as they enter. For the design, after doing some research, I found that the best design was actually one from the Appalachian Trails. This design was most compatible with my own specific unique ideas and so the basis of it is it's going to be a three-foot hole down, one foot in diameter, where I can be pouring cement to make sure that the kiosk is sturdy in all the different weather scenarios. It will be from the bottom, from the ground to the top of the kiosk, 12 feet tall. However, from the bottom of the roof to the ground, it will be about seven feet tall, so this allows clearance for the average-sized person. Once you're inside the kiosk, from the left 4x4 to the right 4x4, it's six feet across and this will provide enough space to put any papers, any maps, anything that needs to be displayed. And from the top of the roof, it's 10 feet long, which will provide enough coverage to protect anything underneath it. So, this is a more in-depth diagram. It shows everything in specifics, like the roof and the sides. So, some features that I wanted to implement because I wanted my kiosk to be unique is I wanted to add a bench where visitors can sit if they wanted to after a tired hike. And I also want to add solar panel lights to allow visibility in the nighttime, just in case anyone's there in the nighttime, because I really wanted to make my kiosk unique, not just an average kiosk. So, pricing, the basic kiosk without any bench or lights would be about $400. The kiosk with the bench would be about $500. The kiosk with the solar panel lighting would be about $480, but however, I want to do the kiosk with the bench and solar panel lighting, which would be about $580. So, for fundraising, I thought of two things. This has worked in my troop before, which is a bake sale, which would require a group of four to eight scouts where half of the scouts would be holding posters that would say information about my project and the other would help me sell the baked goods. And the locations that we've done it previously has been in the Shaws. However, many Eagle Scouts in the past have done it in the transfer station and this has provided well for them. Just a disclaimer, as a fundraiser, we're not allowed to sell items. Instead, we can only ask for donations. And another idea that I had was a car wash. This would also require a group of four to eight scouts and about two to four scouts would also would stand at the front of the road, obviously they'll be safe, holding signs to direct the cars to a car wash and also provide information about my project. The other half of the scouts would help stay back and wash and dry the cars. The location would either be at the Gulf Express in Merrimack. We, I'm a wrestler and we've done it there in the past. Also, we've done it, my troop has done it at Pet Boys in Nashville. This has provided well for them because the Pet Boys will provide all the water and they have, they will donate all the soap and the brushes because it kind of gives them advertisement because all, all the cars will come into the Pet Boys. So, any questions?
Well, great job. I hate asking questions on these because you guys just do such a good job. Thanks for coming back to the community, I appreciate that. Just on your materials, I think on the other page it says metal roofing, but on the diagram it says wood shakes.
Yeah, so I was actually, I didn't know if I wanted to do metal roofing or do shingles because I'm not, I'm not experienced in doing roofing. I wanted to do metal roofing because it seemed the most straightforward and the easiest. I couldn't mess it up, but however, kiosks in the other areas have done shingles and I obviously want to keep the ideal image of the kiosk the same and after discussing it, we were discussing that the shingles would be the best option because they would provide the same appearance of the kiosk, so we decided to go with the.
Well, I think either one will look nice and probably more cost-effective if you don't go, that'll, that is more expensive, but thank you.
Nancy.
Basically, just come up, one, you did a really nice job.
Thank you.
I know the thought of it is actually worse than actually doing it, so you can take a deep breath and it's done. If this gets approved, which I have no question it will, I would like to recommend that you tell us, contact the Town Hall to let us know when the dates are because we'd be, for the bake sale, you'd be happy to advertise it for you. So, we can actually make an announcement that, you know, the Eagle Scout, right, and put it on the website, so that will help you too.
All right, thank you.
Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Sidhant. Again, we're dovetailing off of Counselor Harrington, wonderful job with your presentation tonight. One of the wonderful things about what we do here is we get to hear from young, young men like you who want to give back and do something to improve the quality of life in our community. The Sklar Waterfront Park is brand-new. I mean, this is something, I mean, I don't think it's been in our community for, for less than a year and already you're stepping up looking to create, create and attract people to the specific trails that are inside, go for a walk along the waterfront. I think it's, you're, you're going to create a gateway. This kiosk is going to create a gateway to the park and I'm hopeful that by creating a gateway, it's going to attract the type of people down into that area to go fishing, go for a walk, have a picnic and give the council here some ideas of, you know, and we've talked about, we've talked about this particular part of, part of Merrimack about wanting to do a boat ramp, which is what we talked about a couple of years ago, but I think what you're proposing, I think, is the necessary first step for us to begin to, to work with the Conservation Committee, Commission and feel and see what we can envision for that particular location. So, I'm really excited about your project and I just want to say thank you very much for, for taking this on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Peter.
Sidhant, nice presentation. I didn't catch any of your presentation.
Do you still live in town?
Yeah, I still live in Merrimack.
Yeah, I thought so. I just, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, no public hearings, legislative. Updates from our state representatives? Anybody's here this evening?
Yep. Yeah, okay. We're all gonna, we're all just gonna check in.
Perfect.
Yesterday, we were sworn in, so.
Excellent. Wendy, I think I might be off.
Oh, okay. Yesterday, we were all sworn in, so I come before you as Representative Wendy Thomas because there's three other, or there's two other Thomases. So I am Representative Thomas. I wanted to just give you an update. That's what this is for. I've submitted three bills that are gonna be looked at. One is to get blood testing for communities that are affected by the PFOS, PFAS chemicals. Right now, we have no access to blood work. A doctor couldn't order it if he even wanted to. So this is to have access to the two labs in the United States that offer these tests and to have them at the state contracted price. So that's one of my bills. The other two bills have to do with therapeutic cannabis and I'm a very big advocate of that. One is to open up satellite dispensaries for that. And the second, or the third bill is to add three medical qualifying conditions, that being, or those being insomnia, moderate to severe insomnia, moderate to severe anxiety and Lyme disease, including post-syndrome Lyme disease. So those are my three bills. Legislative emails will be available soon so people can reach us. We're making ourselves available for meetings, presentations. We just came from a meeting over at the Senior Center on being, of kids being connected to electronic devices 24 hours a day. So that was really nice. But just let us know. And we're also working on having office hours once a month at the library.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. I just want to say it's a real privilege to be in a position to represent Merrimack. And I've already heard from some constituents and I urge every member of the Town Council, staff and residents to, to give us a call. My number is 424-6664. Call with any concerns or questions, we'll be happy to help. I did submit one, it's an LSR, it's a Legislative Service Request. It will become a bill later, once it gets signed off. But it was as a result of a public workshop that was held in Litchfield regarding the DES's process for setting minimum, maximum contamination levels for PFOA and three other PFAS chemicals. And during that meeting, the Deputy Commissioner Clark Freize had mentioned that the financial penalties in the RSA, which is 125 colon C, hadn't been updated since 96. So the LSR submitted is just, I consider it housekeeping, it just brings those up to a cost of living for today. So hopefully, that will pass. I've learned nothing is a given. And, but again, I want to just thank the people of Merrimack for their support and want to urge all of you to reach out to us if there's anything you need. But there'll be at least one of us and we'll reach out to the rest of the delegation to be at every Town Council meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Bill?
Do you have a second, Rosemarie?
Representative Thomas? When there is a hearing date for the blood testing, would you please let us know?
Oh, yes, absolutely. 100 percent.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we actually start, during the next few weeks, the Speaker of the House will be setting up committees. And I think our emails are live now. And our first real workday is January 2nd.
Great.
We'll keep you posted.
Thank you very much.
Just to let you know, just for the Secretary, Rosemarie Rung.
Yes.
You hadn't mentioned your name, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
And she goes by the tapes, so just to help her. We know who you are.
Hi, Nancy Murphy. I think, yeah, the ladies have said it all. I'm fortunate to be here. I thank everybody for your support and how responsive you've been to us up until now. We're hoping that you find access easy and that we're available to people. Again, information is everywhere on, on the legislative website. I too filed three LSRs. We had a very short time within which, actually, we had to file them before we were even official. So some of this is on-the-job training and we'll learn and we're hopeful that things will go well. But just wanted to give you the, sort of the Reader's Digest version. Two of my bills have to do clearly with my concern over our PFAS and a problem and health issues around that. The first one establishes a commission to study health impacts and the extent of our exposure here in Merrimack and the surrounding areas, Litchfield, Bedford. The second one is a, is a mental health, Medicaid bill requiring parity in the spend-down requirement for mental health and medical expenses. I discovered that for some reason, people on Medicaid that have medical bills and mental health bills, they're allowed to use medical bills for their spend-down at any point, as long as it remains unpaid. However, mental health bills can only be used for that spend-down in the month of service. So for somebody that has like a $60 spend-down every week and their, their spend-down comes to whatever, $190, they don't reach that spend-down till the last few days of the, the month and get insurance for three days. And then they go through the same thing. So they're looking into that. We're hoping that, that can change. And the third one is establishing a commission to study environmentally triggered chronic illness. I think we've all, you know, talked to, in, to some extent about the need for a health study here in Merrimack, given that we seem to have some health concerns within our, you know, our citizens. And we have a, a health survey, but it was not a health study. So, you know, I think it's important that we have the blood testing and the, the look at health and, and not only for, for our town, but for the state as a whole, because this isn't only our problem. And I, thank you.
Kathy Stack, and I just want to thank you also. To be here is quite a privilege and, and I'm absolutely thrilled. I have also submitted one LSR for consideration and it's relative to private well testing and future development in the town and who will bear the cost of providing some filtration. This came out of an MVD meeting. I just wanted to bring it forward to, to shed some light on the, the concerns, monetary concerns that the MVD has and to put, shift the burden of the finances where they rightfully belong. So I'm happy to be here. I'm thrilled to work with you and please reach out anytime and my colleagues have said we'll be here, we'll be around.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, if you could just hold for a second. Peter?
Congratulations, first of all, representatives. While I got you here, there's a couple of things that if you, if you could all kind of keep your eyes and ears attentive to, a couple of things would be, in the past year, we've had representatives come in and talk to us about their reformulating of formula on the valuation of utility properties. That could, depending on how it goes, affect our community adversely, maybe not. But if, if you folks could keep an eye closely on that, and I can't remember the House bill number on it.
324.
Thank you. 324. That'd be awesome. Also, as you, as you're all aware, the FE Everett Turnpike widening. We had a delegation come in, and I don't know if you folks saw that presentation to us. There's a couple of things that bothered me about that. One, that they were promoting a possibility of a swap, of us taking over the maintenance of industrial drive and Continental Boulevard for, for two toll booths, exit 1011, that are losing money.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I don't know, I, it sounds like there's not a lot of sympathy up there for us, but could you guys, could you folks please keep an eye on that and maybe, maybe get some movement on that? It seems to me if they're not making money or they're making, it's costing them 95 cent or 93 cents for a 50 cent toll, it doesn't make sense. And then also the actual widening, there's several neighborhoods, the DOT that I believe, and I think members of this council believe too, are gonna need adequate sound and site protection, at least sound protection. And we, we sent up as a council a list and that would, you could get a copy of that as well from the town manager. That'd be great if you could keep an eye on that and, and really help us on that. And then the last thing is kind of a personal thing regarding bail. The governor changed the bail laws just recently and I believe they're going to revisit that because they found some inequacy, inequities in it. And that would be, if that comes up, keep an eye on it because there's some problems with that law as it came through. I see it on a professional level every day, so if you could keep an eye on that one, that'd be great.
What are the problems?
Excuse me?
What are the problems?
Wendy, I don't want to get into it here, but I would gladly, I can email you or something and, okay?
That's what I was gonna ask. If there's a way that maybe we could have a copy of that stuff, like a hard copy, so we can look into it? Because one of the, the committees that I asked to be on was, because I have some friends on the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. So that was my first choice, so I'm hopeful. But again, we're freshmen, so the chance is probably nil. But Health and Human Services was one of the other ones and Child and Family Law were my three. But if we actually had a hard copy to take with us, because I know some of the people that are on those committees and just knowing what I'm talking about, rather than try to find it on my phone and have a sense of what we're asking for specifically, would be really helpful. Because we'll, we see the people, so.
You can bring it to your attention now.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, just, in, just in general, no, I just, the Council, Council Albert stole, I would stole my thunder about the, the piece on the turnpike in the Department of Transportation. I would hope, moving forward, that, that all, not just you four ladies here tonight, but the entire legislative delegation, really pay attention to the role that the Department of Transportation has on projects that are going on in Merrimack. We've dealt with a specific issue down along 101A adjacent to Connection. Thank you. Connection, that there was a couple of months of testimony and back and forth and I actually saw the letter in our public file and it actually got resolved to our satisfaction, so I was really happy about that. But again, like the industrial drive and Continental Boulevard piece, those are the specific issues that, as a council, I think we're really going to be in tune to because of the impacts that it could potentially have to not just us, but the departments here in the community that, that deal with it. And then Representative Stack individually, I would encourage you to go to the Department of Environmental Services website and check out the Well Water Board. There is actually a board that manages well water in the state and I was absolutely blown away and fascinated by the, the level of responsibility that they have regarding private wells here in the state. And I think, because I do agree with what you're trying to do, I think understanding the role that that very small board in the responsibility that it has, not only gets directly to environmental quality, but it actually gets to planning standards and planning board standards with how, not just here in Merrimack, but around New Hampshire, how developers are able to build not just commercial property, but residential property. So there's, this is, there's, there's a potential there to really look and, look at the role that they have, not just here in Merrimack, but statewide. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that.
Absolutely. Thank you. I actually have submitted requests to be on some of those commissions, particularly for the, the environment and the well water. But it's, who knows what I'll get or not get. I could get transportation, who knows?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you now.
Thank you.
All right. Town managers report.
Okay. On December 4th, the Planning Board granted conditional approval to the Edgebrook Heights for a conditional use permit to allow for the development of a future mixed-use development consisting of 34,400 square feet of commercial slash retail slash office space, a 4,000-square-foot convenience store and 12 gasoline fuel stations, positions, 76 units of elderly housing and 156 units of multifamily residential spread across three buildings with an associated clubhouse. The property is located at the southern end of DW Highway, just to the south of the former Natural Corp and NanoCom Technologies. The conditional use permit does not authorize any actual construction to take place. It merely sets the parameters for how the development will be reviewed and regulated in the subdivision and site plan review process. The conditional use permit will be followed by individual subdivision and site plans. Only after final approval of the individual site plans will any actual construction be allowed to take place. And the reason this is on, on here is because I want to make sure that the council is kept informed through, you know, this particular venue of the larger projects as they progress. This is one that you know about, this is one that we've talked about, but it's kind of sat on the back burner for a while. So we just wanted to let you know that this particular one that's been languishing for two or three years is, is coming to the forefront again. And we'll be, you know, giving you updates on some of these other projects that are, as I said, you know, that we've been discussing relative to the residential apartments and, and that kind of thing, because we have a number of them coming. The developer of Greenfield Farms Phase 14 project has completed the sewer extension along Brenda Lane, Blair Road and Whispering Pines Lane. Residents located along the path of the new sewer line are now able to connect to the system. Thank you.
Thanks, Ollie. Tonight, we have no consent agenda. Item number one under Old Business was tabled at our November 15th meeting and that's the MS4 permit follow-up discussion. If somebody would move to take it off the table.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor of taking off the table? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Five zero zero.
Just so the public knows, we're laughing over this because we had, before the meeting, we had a little teasing discussion on who does first and second, so that's what, this little game that you're saying here is about that.
It wasn't who did them, it was the quick response.
The speed of it all.
And the others couldn't get into it and so anyhow.
So that you understand what the kibitzin is about.
The, the mention was made that you have to push the button like Jeopardy because they come fast and furious. So there's a little challenge going on here.
Hi, Don. How are you? Thanks. Well. Yes. Good evening. We're, we're all excited about this.
So responding to that, it's like.
I think it might be turned off. Don?
I just wanted to ask, John, before you start, again, just for the public, a 30-word explanation of what this whole MS4 is about.
And the reason this is on here is because I want to make sure that the council is kept informed through, you know, this particular venue of the larger projects as they progress. This is one that you know about, this is one that we've talked about, but it's kind of sat on the back burner for a while. So we just wanted to let you know that this particular one that's been languishing for two or three years is coming to the forefront again. And we'll be, you know, giving you updates on some of these other projects that are, as I said, you know, that we've been discussing relative to the residential apartments and that kind of thing, because we have a number of them coming. The developer of Greenfield Farms Phase fourteen project has completed the sewer extension along Brenda Lane, Blair Road, and Whispering Pines Lane. Residents located along the path of the new sewer line are now able to connect to the system. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Tonight, we have no consent agenda. Item number one under Old Business was tabled at our November fifteenth meeting, and that's the MS four permit follow-up discussion. If somebody would move to take it off the table.
So I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of taking off the table? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Just so the public knows, we're laughing over this, because we had, before the meeting, we had a little teasing discussion on who does first and second. So that's what, this little game that you're saying here is about.
It wasn't who did them, it was the quick response.
The speed of it all.
Others couldn't get into it, and so anyhow.
So that you understand what the kibitzin is about.
The mention was made that you have to push the button like Jeopardy, because they come fast and furious. So there's a little challenge going on here.
Hi, Don. How are you? Well. Yes. Good evening. We're all excited about this. I think it might be turned off.
I just wanted to ask, John, before you start, again, just for the public, a thirty-word explanation of what this whole MS four is about. Because, you know, we understand it, but I think we need to help the public appreciate the global view very quickly, that's all.
Okay. The MS four stands for the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And the MS four went into effect July first of this year. We had to have the first part of this actually done for October first, which we met that goal, that's called the NOI. So what this does is anything that the town, the roads, the drainage, anything that impacts the water, the rivers, Babusak Lake, we have to make sure that we have clean water going to them. And so what this program does is to help clean up all of our storm sewers and all of the runoff. It can be from pet waste, it can be from lawns, it can be from a number of different sources. And what we need to do is to be able to get the water cleaned. And that's what this program that is set out under the EPA is out to do, basically. So this is our best estimate at this date. So this is planning out for the first five years. And the first five years of this new permit is for planning and data collection. So we're gonna be testing the waters, we're gonna be testing, you know, some of the soil, we're gonna be relooking at all of the regulations and updating them to be able to meet all the requirements that the EPA has now set out for us. We've been under a permit since two thousand and three, but this is a new permit, and we have new goals to be able to obtain. So for the nineteen twenty year, the work will mostly be done in-house. There will be a need for some equipment so that next summer I can be able to have the interns go out and to start doing some of the sampling and some of the testing that needs to be done. We're fortunate that we have a lab within our wastewater treatment, which I can assign an intern to and be able to get our testing underway. They will have to be, take some classes, you know, classes and trained, but that's doable, you know, for the summer. And what the cost there will be is basically the cost for the testing materials and that type of thing. There are a couple of tests that we cannot do in-house, and it would cost us more to do them in-house and to get certified for those than to send them out. So we're proposing to send out a couple of the different testing to be done. So what the EPA did was they gave me this guideline for the different aspects for the next five years. So what they did is they called them control measures, control measures one through six, and they each have different items within them. I did this two different ways to give you an option and to be able to look at the different costs. So the first way I did was under contractor. There's a lot of hours that's gonna be dedicated. They're looking at, just for doing the planning part, something like two thousand hours, which is basically forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year. So that's a lot, I mean, that would be a total dedication of all my time if I were to do that. So in the future, I've planned out for a contractor. This is cost projection number one. Cost projection number two would be to hire a new employee underneath myself, a technician or an environmental person to be able to carry a lot of this load. So I've shown in the chart here, the top is the contractor, we have a total of one point two million dollars. If we were to hire an employee, we would be a little bit over a million dollars. So we'd have a savings of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars over the five-year period, basically. And that would be actually only a four-year period, because we wouldn't be having an employee in the nineteen twenty year. It would be starting in the twenty twenty-one year. So if you, the first control measure, one and two, it's basically all reports. It's the NOI that I've already created. Notice of intent. That is the very first thing, and it took me over a month, just in my own time, to do that one.
Do you mind?
Yep.
All right. Don, while you're on it, and I just wanted to talk about it real fast, because I know people at home might look at this and see, new employee cost ninety-five thousand, and say, wow, they get paid a lot, that's a lot of salary. And I guess, can you break that down? That's benefits and salary?
Yes, I believe it was sixty-five thousand for salary, and then the rest is in benefits.
Okay, and that's that same employee, that one employee salary over this five years?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I populated it out, so you'd see for the five years what it would actually cost.
I mean, some people might just look at that number, that's why I asked.
Right. A lot of what is in the plan, we already do today, so all of those numbers, which I had shown you some numbers last year, I reduced all of those out that we already do, because we do a lot of this work already. But we need to step it up a little bit.
Yeah, oh, no, and that's not a problem, it's just that I think some people see that one number.
Right. I should have, yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don, what are we currently spending to be compliant under the old permit?
The old permit's gone.
I understand that. What were we spending to be compliant under the old permit?
It was all done by town employees.
Okay. So done by town employees, that was absorbed as a part of your annual budget every year, that the employees were responsible for doing X. So you're asking, or potentially, the council is gonna be forced to deal with adding an additional one point one million dollars over the next five years to our budget to add an individual to be compliant or to attempt to be compliant with this MS four permit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the things, I'm sure I don't mean to step ahead here, but I think it's just, it's important for us to understand that this is only the first four years, which is pretty much data gathering. So this is the cheap part.
Right.
So what we're looking at here were a lot of annual consultant numbers. And we looked at this from several different perspectives. We looked at it from whether or not we should hire a, you know, another maintainer position, a laborer position, and whether or not that would be cost-effective versus the more professional staff and have that person do some of the things that we would do consulting for, rather than, you know, extra street sweeping and things, street sweeping and things. But the point of this is, and I think that we have tried to drive this point home to you and that Bill is alluding to, is that these are new things that are, in, at least in our estimation, really overkill and that we were, we've tried to get a more reasonable approach, a more specific approach to our own issues, but we have the cookie cutter, one size fits all program that uses old data. I mean, there's so many things wrong with it that we've tried to, you know, to get them to kind of slow down with it and think about it before imposing these enormous costs on the towns. And so these costs, although they are shocking, are only the introduction, because this is information gathering, then we get in, after the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, we get into the actual doing of, you know, cleaning and taking that data and applying whatever methods it is to clean up the things to.
I will say, since two thousand and three, we had, the town has been working towards that.
Oh, I know.
So with our testing, with the new testing that we will be starting in the summer, hopefully, we've already met some of those requirements, you know.
So it might be reflecting a change in the previous data already?
That's our goal. By the end of five years, is to be able to get some new data.
Because you're testing now, some of the recommendations are based upon old data, which is debatable.
We're getting real data.
And as the testing goes on, it might be to our benefit, because it might reflect that some of the things that we're doing already, in fact, are having an impact.
Correct. Correct. And we haven't stopped since two thousand and three, so. Three, three.
Yeah, three, when we had the first permit.
It was fifteen.
Early born.
The first five-year permit went on for fifteen years.
Wow. So the interventions are the things that we might have to do are gonna be based upon that second analysis, then?
Right.
Which we will know.
Which I won't, I have no idea.
You won't know yet. Okay, gotcha.
Just echo on what Eileen had said, just to let people at home know, that this has been on our radar since two thousand and twelve. When we were first, when, and I don't know if it was Kyle or Don, but when DPW made us aware of this particular permit, and some of the, even back in two thousand and twelve, some of the preliminary cost estimates that were being promulgated to us were, were very sobering at that particular time. So I just, I want the people at home to know that, I've taken a particular interest in it only because I feel very strongly that this is an unfunded mandate, that we are being asked to clean up something, and we're not getting any help from the federal government to pay for this. And that's what frosts my cookies about this whole thing. It's not that I'm against clean water, I'm against the federal government telling me that we have to clean up this, and they're not willing to help us pick up the tab to do it. And I'm not gonna be redundant and go back and revisit the arguments made in two thousand and twelve, but I want people at home to know that this has been on the council's radar for the last six years. We've been, I don't wanna say we've been waiting for this moment, but we've been waiting for this particular moment in time to arrive, and it's arrived, and people just need to be aware of it, that they're gonna see some sobering numbers.
I think there needs to be some clarity, though, that I think we don't want to leave the impression that we don't want to take responsibility for polluting any of our water.
I don't disagree with you.
Clearly, that has to be designated. However, there are things like, as I said, Concord is not applied, it does not apply to Concord. And some of our testing is a result of the pollution that comes down from Concord that we have to take responsibility for. That kinds of inequities.
Correct.
Is the difficulties we've had and we've tried to work through. And the reality is, New Hampshire is one of three states that doesn't have the, two states. Massachusetts is one, right? And New Hampshire are the only ones that don't have their own state DES doing the standards. So as a result of that, we have to go with the federal EPA.
Correct.
Which are dramatically more stringent, and we can debate about whether that's good or bad, but the point is, it's not individualized to us. So Massachusetts is in the same boat as us, right? So I just wanted to clarify that, just to build upon what you said.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
That we've been fighting with the inequities built into this. Not that we are against, and we've already worked on, as you've said, Don, the wastewater treatment and all that, but.
Where we will have to be testing.
We're at the point now where we have to do it, it's the reality.
Yeah.
Where we will be testing is where our system meets the water. So we won't be testing necessarily in the Merrimack. We don't have to clean up the entire Merrimack. We have to clean up what our portion is that's entering into the Merrimack.
So we've been able to isolate, okay. That's better than previously thought.
Yep.
So, and same thing. But we have a lot of water in this town. There's a lot of rivers.
How many outfalls is it? Approximately thousand?
We have, there's five thousand catch basins. I didn't do a tally of the outfalls, but what I did on the.
Hundreds.
Five hundred? Well, there's more falls.
Your boss just said that, so we're gonna go with that.
Okay. Sounds good. I picked out, what I did for the notice of intent, the NOI, is I picked out eighty-eight of the ones that I thought were the most direct influence to the waters for right now, because there's no way I'm gonna be able to test all of those in a year. So I picked out and targeted the main ones for us. Whether the EPA buys my plan or not, it'll remain to be seen. I have not heard back since I have submitted on October first. They had said it thirty days, but it's well beyond that timeframe, so we'll see. But nobody else has heard anything, other than UNH in the state, so.
Pretty good. We'll continue on it.
I don't know if you wanted to get into what each one of the control measures are, or whether you don't really care. This is just the high overview look of what it is.
I think the high overview is what I meant.
So basically, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar saving if you chose to go with the new employee versus doing a contractor.
Okay, so the rest of your presentation here is pointing out to what those.
It just goes into more details, yes.
Okay.
So if you wanted to see those, each one of the following pages just says.
No, perfect. Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, a couple of follow-ups, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. I apologize, Don, thank you. Did, are there any other communities doing something like us in hiring an employee? Is there any type of a standardized job description that you're using? Or are we gonna be starting over from scratch and creating a job description specifically for the employee that you would like to hire to do a lot of this, a lot of this work?
I have a listing of all of the different items that they would need to do as a part of this project. I am part of the Manchester Nashua Coalition Group, which we meet, in fact, I just had a two-hour meeting today. We are trying to work together as communities in southern New Hampshire to offset some of these costs. So we're starting right up at the top. We're still within control measure one, but we're doing a SWIP plan, so we'll have some information that we'll be able to share with each other. And that would be part, you know, what are we going to have to do? Are we gonna have to hire, because many towns are in the same position we are. There's only one person that's dealing with it, essentially.
So are we looking at like an environmental scientist or something along those lines?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. The other, the next question is, has there been any analysis done by either you or Director Fox regarding some of the communities upriver along the South Heagan as to what their MS four responsibility is gonna be and any impacts that they're gonna be dealing with? Because, you know, the way that I've understand the old permit, and maybe things have changed, is that, you know, runoff that's occurring in Milford and Amherst, Francis Town, Lineboro, you know, all flow, they all, the way that the South Heagan River Valley is, those communities are definitely gonna see a migration of stormwater being runoff into the South Heagan. And I'm presuming we're gonna see some of that runoff in the South Heagan being, as a part of our responsibility, going into catch basins that may exist either on the South Heagan or some of the smaller tributaries like the Babusak Brook.
The only ones we'll have to deal with is whatever's coming off of our roads and our systems and going into the South Heagan. South Heagan starts in Massachusetts, and it comes up through New Ipswich and Greenville. Neither one of those two towns are within the MS four. The MS four starts in Wilton, where the South Heagan comes through. It's only a small part of Wilton. Then it goes all the way through Milford and into Amherst and before it comes into us. Lineboro has a waiver also from the MS four, because they have too small a population, and their runoff goes in various different directions. And by the time their runoff gets into the South Heagan, it should be fairly clear, but they don't have the industry, nor the people, nor the impervious surfaces that they're concerned about.
And I would agree with you on that. So I guess really, potentially, it would either be Amherst or Milford. And I'm assuming that they have quantifiable standards that they're gonna be working on so that whatever happens down river, we should not, pardon my language, folks, we shouldn't be cleaning up after them?
Correct. Correct. We're gonna be cleaning up our own streets.
And the last question regarding, I looked through some of the control measures, and thank you for including that, I appreciate that. What type of educational outreach are we going to be doing? Is that gonna be directed towards businesses? Is that gonna be to residential homes? I'm just kinda curious to know what the goals are gonna be. Obviously, I'm thinking you wanna minimize and mitigate whatever they're, whatever they're putting outside, that they're trying to contain that as much as possible, so that our responsibility at the end of the day is gonna be very limited. so that our responsibility at the end of the day is going to be very limited to stuff that either is man-made or, or naturally occurring in the area.
So, funny you should ask that, because that's what we were dealing with today.
Okay.
Is how to deal with, and we were first dealing with residents, private individuals. We will also have to target the commercial people, the businesses, industry, and then the reconstruction contractor, that, that type. So, we are dealing with, we started today with the residences. So, we're working on putting out some flyers or we're trying to brainstorm how exactly we want to get all this information out to the public. And we're dealing with only three items for the residences at this point, which would be pet waste is a very large part. Nitrogen phosphorus, so your lawns, lawn clippings. We will need to put out some flyers on, you can't dump your lawn clippings in the wetlands. It's contaminating, it's, it's adding to the nitrogen phosphorus. So, those are the main ones that we're going to focus on, and also septic systems and how to keep your septic system. Because part of the town, I don't know if it's fifty percent or sixty percent of the town, is on individual septic systems and not on town sewer. So, those will also have to be addressed and making sure that they're maintained and that they're not polluting the waters. So, that would be the, that's going to be the first focus of what we're going to do.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, because I, I compost my lawn clippings, I, I compost a lot of my stuff that Michelle and I do in our yard. Is, is that going to impact any people with their ability to, to compost at all?
There's proper places to compost.
Okay.
It's a good thing to compost. And it's good to, if you have one of the lawn mowers that actually puts it back into the ground, that's good.
Okay.
But it's the hauling of the lawn clippings and the leaves and dumping them into the wetlands. And I've actually, one of my first jobs here that I got sent out on was investigating lawn clippings. And so, it, it is a problem in certain areas, and we're going to have to address that.
And so, somebody who's expanded their property into a wetland by that, and now I'm hearing this tonight, which seemed, should have been obvious just on the surface, but.
And then the, the last question, I, I remember from some of my reading earlier on that there was actually a goal for phosphorus. Have they lowered that amount, that, that goal amount with phosphorus, or does that remain the same? Because I, I think it was in the, either the high sixties or the low seventies that they were looking to clean up to remove.
I don't know that answer, but I believe in wastewater, it has. And we are, again, fortunate with wastewater because they have done a lot of the work that, you know, we've, we will have to also do. One thing with Meramec is that our systems have always been separate. Our stormwater systems have always been separated from the sewer systems. Like Manchester and Nashville, they have a combined system.
Right.
And it's a problem. And so, those are the illicit discharges that they're going to be going after. We found one a few years ago that had accidentally tied a sewer line into a drain line. The contractor just didn't saw the line connect, but that's a very rare occurrence in this town. But it does happen, and those are things that we're going to have to be, you know, more mindful of and looking for.
Okay. I appreciate all the work you've done on this, because there's, there's, I mean, I've always scratched the surface and I know you've been immersed.
It's mind-boggling.
It's been mind-boggling, you've been immersed in it for the last couple of years. So, I really want to thank you for all the work that you've done on it, Don, thank you.
Thank you, but I, you know, I'm going to need, I really need some help of some sorts.
You're, you're going to get, trust me, you, you will get, at least from, from where I sit, I'm prepared to help you because it needs to be done. Because, because I think the grand scheme of things, that if we're not compliant, it's conceivable that the DOJ could be, could be finding this community. And I don't want to, I don't want to put this community in that particular position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill, and I just had a real quick question. Is it, who granted the waiver to Lineboro and Concord and everybody, is it DES or EPA?
EPA.
Okay, thank you. You don't need anything from us tonight, this is just going to eventually become a budget issue.
But you need to know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, and I, I can see the difference and, and I'm on board.
All right, is no further questions?
Thank you, Don, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I do want to thank my colleagues for tabling this, because I was detained on that day, so thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item, number two under old business. The council will discuss the status of the Fraser Square Veterans Memorial Project and determine the future of that project.
Paul, are you going to be speaking to this person?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, back in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, Dave Yakuboff and Brian Snell came in front of the council.
See, I, I can only do one thing at a time, so I appreciate that, because I'd up there would have goofed me up, so.
Came in front of the council and asked to present, presented a plan to do a Fraser Square memorial with granite poles and, and emblems of all the service units and to do it at Fraser Square. Part of that plan was to take down a tree. One day, I was sitting, talking to a resident, and I looked over their shoulder and I was like, uh-oh, there's a big sign right there, Duncan Fraser. It says, during the sca- during the dedication, a tree was planted. And it shows the Christmas tree being planted as a dedication to Fraser Square. Seeing that, knowing what's there, figuring you really don't want to take down a tree. That was part of a dedication to a serviceman who fell during a battle. We looked at other alternatives and we looked at Watson Park and other, other areas throughout town to, to continue to build this. We started to collect some donations, received about fifteen thousand dollars in total by selling some bricks, twenty-two bricks, and six of the eight emblems that we needed with commitments for the other two. The, we, we tried for almost two years during the same time the dog park was being built. So, we said, let's take a backseat and not ask the same businesses over and over again for donations. At that time, we really were able to quantify some numbers, and it was going to cost between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars to build it. We would have had to sell almost a thousand bricks, and we only had twenty-two sold. And we didn't see, uh, certain organizations stepping up to the plate to help us sell bricks that we thought would, at the beginning, come before you tonight in regret to ask that, at this time, we return the money or ask the people who have donated either a brick or, or an emblem if they would like their money back or if we can use that money to beautify Fraser Square. There are some ideas that I have to beautify Fraser Square with the over, actually trimming the tree and some of the other items.
I'm sorry, but I just, um, I don't think that would really be appropriate. I think this is for a very specific purpose, and, um, people were asked to donate for a memorial, not to, to do some landscaping. So, um, I, I'm opposed to. I, I'm more likely to be in favor of giving the money back.
Well, some of the money we won't be able to, because it was cash donations, I, I suspect, and.
If we have, if we have a name or an address, if we had a check, if we received those things.
Right.
We do have that, and we're going to try to send a letter out to those people.
Okay, uh, Peter.
Paul, so I'm hearing, what, what held up this project, and I remember Brian coming to the council a few years back, is the tree, correct?
That, that held, that held up putting it at Fraser Square itself. Because there was no access for people who were handicapped, an easy access. Because, as you know, Fraser Square has the granite block all around and it's raised. So, the only way to get into Fraser Square, if you do not come in by that tree, is to step up onto the curb, from the curb.
So, I guess I'm, and I don't know the history of Mr. Fraser. It's funny, because that's one person I hadn't ever, and I guess this is going to make me curious to look into the history. And it's out of no disrespect, but at this point, that, that's that pine tree that's just completely overgrown Fraser Square. Couldn't we, i- if the tree were removed, couldn't we do something to honor Mr. Fraser, put a, a plaque up there?
Actually, there wa- there is a plaque by the, by the, by the flagpole, there is a plaque for his dedication to service and the tree.
So, you know, maybe plant a, a smaller tree on there and rename it, you know? Because I, I, you know, I, I guess I'm having a hard time, that this tree was planted, and how many years ago was it?
About thirty, nineteen eighty-eight.
You know, and I still think we could honor Mr. Fraser and still move on with this project and, and allow that handicap access, because it's the tree now that's holding.
It's the fundraising as well.
Right, because the real, the real cost, Paul, is just fifty-three thousand.
Yeah, because, um, I just, I just want to make sure that we understand that the, the progression of events started with looking at the tree. Um, and that was our first stumbling block. But by no means is it the one that is causing the project to not be viable. Like you said, he's, they've sold twenty-two bricks and they need to sell a thousand. So, and it's been a long time. I mean, they, they were working on it a long time and were able to get twenty-two bricks. So, it's, it's just not economically feasible unless the town council, you know, wants us to do the project itself. So, it's, it's not so much the tree.
I kind of jumped in there, this take, so, okay, thank you.
For, for Councilor Albert's education, down in Town Hall, across from the city clerk's desk is a picture of Private Gilbert Duncan Fraser, died at the age of eighteen in World War One in the Battle of Bellew, was awarded the Purple Heart and the Bronze Star for his service. No.
Thank you, Bill.
So, we, we actually have a very nice display in Town Hall for, for Private Fraser, for, for, for the sacrifice that he made for, for this community, for our country in World War One. So, I tend to agree with the, the town manager that unless we can have something a little bit more viable, because I agree with the vision that, that Brian and our former colleague, Dave Yakuboff, had, you know, it was a wonderful idea. You know, I, I think it would be, I think it would be prudential to return the funds back to the people that had made the contributions with the idea that Fraser Square was going to be expanded upon to provide that vision that, that Brian and Dave wanted to do there, so.
I know, I know at the time, I thought it was absolutely beautiful memorial. I, uh, and that certainly the estimate at that time was nowhere close to that. Wasn't fifty thousand dollars.
It wasn't, it was, it was, it was very expensive. And, and the way that it was originally presented was that, um, all of these things were all but sold. But then it just didn't.
Well, I think part of the difficulty was Dave's passing. He was part of the impetus of this too, and I think that created it. I do, I agree, I mean, it's, it was a spectacular memorial, and there were some disagreements about that. Some people did not like it, being there or the type of memorial it was. But considering the circumstances, I'm not sure what choice we have.
And it wasn't for lack of try. We, we sat and we, we were at the Fourth of July's.
Yes, that's right.
We were at the Meramec Rocks, we were at the business expos, we were, we went and talked to all, a lot of different organizations about this project. And nobody stepped up and actually either offered to help, so to speak. There, we, we did get people who stepped up to offer help, but it was not significant, a significant movement to move the project forward.
It was a pleasure of the council. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we direct the town manager and/or the finance director to reach out to the current list of donors that made contributions for the Fraser, Fraser Square Veterans Memorial and give them the opportunity to direct the town what they want their contribution to be done with, either to be returned or allocated somewhere else. I'm assuming returned, but.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the question holders in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Uh, five zero zero, it is too bad.
It is, I agree.
Next item under new business. Two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-five capital improvement program. Town manager Cabno and finance director Paul McKelly are here to present the details to us.
Okay, so, um, this is our annual capital improvements plan. We wanted to give you some information this year about why we, uh, you know, some of the, sometimes, and rightfully so, you ask us, why, why are some of these big, huge projects under minor projects? And other projects are, um, you know, that, um, under the major projects that might cost less. So, what, you know, what is the difference between the two? And the major projects, the real difference is the major projects are the ones that need to be reviewed by the planning board. So, the planning board, uh, so any, anything over a hundred thousand dollars, that would be, need to be, be reviewed by the planning board. The planning board is going to look at things that relate to the master plan and their build-out study and those kinds of things. So, they're not going to be looking at our equipment or, you know, um, those vehicles and those kinds of things. So, that's why you see, you can see some expensive communications equipment, for instance, showing up in minor projects. It's really, they're not minor projects, but we just try and differentiate between the two so that we could take, uh, you know, one spreadsheet and bring that to the planning board. So, um, we're required every year to present a six-year capital improvements plan, and we revisit it every year. So, we don't just move the year back one year, we look at it one year to the next for affordability, for the amounts of money that we put into our capital reserve funds, which, once again, I know I say this every year, but it's, I think it's really important to congratulate the town and the town council for setting aside money in capital, um, reserve funds. Because instead of borrowing, what, what I would give as analogy, analogy, to put things on your credit card, you're saving up for them and paying for them in cash, which there's nothing really better than that, if you can. So, um, so for instance, if you wanted to buy a fire truck and it costs four hundred thousand dollars, you'd put a hundred thousand dollars a year into the savings account and then you could buy it outright for cash. So, it's, um, it's a wonderful way to go about it, and Meramec does that very, very well. And that's one of the reasons why we have so little debt. So, um, you proceed. So, oh, Paul, what did you do here?
I left it in because just wanted to show.
Okay, this is just for reference purposes, okay? We wanted to show you, you have this in yours, but we've put it into a format where you can see it better. So, so what you see here is that you, you see the whole thing going out to twenty-four, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five? And for our, um, the presentation for the public, we're going to take those last three, four, three years? Four years off, and then we'll just talk about those as seconds. So, we're trying to break this up so the public can actually see it. So, this is what you have, but this is what we'd like to present to you. We're going to do it to you in this format. So, it's the same as what you have, but it's in a, um, in a way that can actually be seen on the screen. So, um, these are as part, as I was just talking about, one of the things that we do for our capital reserve, for our purchases, is we set aside, we have these very specific capital reserve funds that have been established by, um, the townspeople at various times to set us, that have very specific purposes for, as. for, as I said, saving money to do particular projects. And they have, the public has said, this is what we want to be put, put in and spent out of. That's right. So, there, so the, we're showing you two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, which is the current year that we're in, and these are our recommendations for, for deposits into capital reserve funds. And you can see there's one item, which is traffic signal preemption, which are those things on top of the traffic lights where the fire trucks can use their lights and the police cars also. Yes, that's all, police cars also?
No.
No, oh, well. I'd like one.
I'd kind of, I was going to say, I kind of would like that.
So, yeah, so we, we don't expect that, that, that has been increased, but I, in looking at it now, I don't, I'm, I'm not convinced that we need to increase that by, by twenty-five thousand dollars. So, it's going to be very similar to, to this current year. So, so to kind of give you an, an, uh, understanding of how this whole thing kind of fits together. We meet with the department heads, they've been through this process for many, many years. They go through and they look at the capital, the capital improvements plan or the CIP from the, they'll take a look at last year's and they'll say, do, when can we get these done? We've got better numbers now and that, and all those kinds of things, and these are the things that we need to do. Then Paul looks at it from an affordability standpoint, meaning if we put this amount of money in our capital reserve fund, what year can we then pay for it? And so, we take, we take the projects and then tailor the, tailor the projects back into, to the way that we can afford them. So, there's various categories, so there's, here's, here's some of the funding mechanism, which would be your capital reserve funds, and then you also have expenditures that come out of your operating budget. So, in other words, come from cash. And then you have either bond proposals, which go before the voters and require a quarter, two-thirds majority vote. And then you have state and federal grants, which are often, the town matches. So, here's, this is one aspect of the funding of the capital reserve fund projects. So, you can see we put, you put almost two million dollars every year into your savings accounts to get things done.
Remember, because of the way that the legislation changed last year with RSA thirty-five, the two thousand nineteen, twenty capital reserve funds will not be included in the budget as a budget, the total budget amount. So, last year on our thirty-four million dollar operating budget, the two million dollars was included as part of the operating budget. This year, the two million dollars would have to go on a separate warrant article, either individual warrant articles for each capital reserve fund or one lump warrant article for the whole amount or several different warrant articles. We are working on the language for the charter change that pertains to this. We had a little bit of a stumbling block, hopefully we're over that up at the state level. The gentleman I was working with at the state has left the state. So, I'm trying to find out who his replacement is so we can continue the process of talking about getting that charter article changed. But I did want to bring it to the council's attention now that this would be one of those special warrant articles or additional warrant articles for the deposits.
Paul, thank you, and I, I think that as we get closer to April, that we really have to do a lot of public service announcements regarding what this is and why, because people are going to look at their ballot and go, what the heck? And I think that they need to understand why and what it is, and we really need to, we as a council and a town government need to emphasize that and educate.
Just for your reference. So, we've broken this down into that, your report into smaller bites. So, right now, we're looking at the major projects. These are the projects that are, we're, we're giving you for reference what is being done this current year that we're in through June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen. So, and then we're showing you the other projects that are being proposed as well as in colors what they, what they, where the money comes from. So, if you look at two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we have two amounts of money up there. Just, I'm just giving you an example of, at the top in blue in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, you see twenty-five thousand dollars from the capital reserve fund for the fires, uh, fire station capital reserve fund to spend twenty-five thousand dollars for a feasibility study for the, for a, potentially for a public safety complex and, and another twenty-five thousand dollars that would be, that will be paid for out of cash, out of this current year's budget. So, I'm not going to go through all of these, I'm just giving you an example. So, in two thousand nineteen, twenty, we have, you see, go down the middle row there between, in the numbers there. You see the first number in blue is every year we put, put aside a certain money, amount of money for stormwater and drainage improvements. We would prefer to do that, use that money for very specific stormwater drainage improvements, but if necessary, we can use some of that to work on the MS four compliance. So, then we have, every year, we have the registration fee, it's five dollars that goes with the registration fee that accumulates a certain amount of money that then gets spent on road improvements. So, that's in a kind of a burgundy red color, right? So, and then we're proposing seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to come out of the operating budget. We're trying to, you know, as, as we've been trying to do every year, is try to kind of step up that road paving and infrastructure kind of thing to try and keep up. And it's very hard to do, it's one of the easiest places to cut, just a quick flick of the pen and there it's gone. But, so we, we spend a lot of time trying to make sure that that remains at least constant from year to year. So, then, in administration and engineering, the Turkey Hill Road intersection improvements.
We do have slides for each one of these projects behind, that we could talk about.
So, if you have more specific questions, then we can go to those.
All right, here's, here's the Turkey Hill improvements.
Basically, what we're looking at at Turkey Hill is, is we look at the design and we're looking at, right now, it's kind of a, a Y-ish kind of, if you're coming down Baboosik Lake Road, you kind of break off and you got to go Y, it's kind of like a Y on Baboosik Lake Road. We're looking at, maybe looking at potentially redoing that intersection to make it less chickenish as you're coming down Baboosik Lake Road and trying to get onto Turkey Hill Road. You kind of look in and, and you're, you're, you're cutting across, you don't want to play chicken coming across. So, we're looking at redoing that either by a roundabout or some kind of T-intersection there in the, in the Turkey Hill Road area.
Okay, so, then we come down to the Baboosik Lake Road and Woodbury sidewalk projects. That's the most recent application, TAP, Transportation Alternative Plan that we have, that Kyle and Dawn have submitted for, to do the sidewalk project as part of the South Heagan River Trail project, right?
What's the Baboosik Lake Road portion?
This is the other one, the one that we had to take the money for, to put it towards the, this is the other project that, for the sidewalks on Woodbury.
Right.
Baboosik Lake, we re-applied, and this would be if we received the grant next year.
Okay, I was just wondering where the sidewalks on that, it's not real critical right now, but.
Sidewalks on Baboosik Lake, we do have that.
I can, I can look that up, don't worry about that.
No, that's okay.
Oops, right there.
I'm just drawing a blank.
There.
It'd be from the library, as it says, the first section would consistently along.
Baboosik Lake Road from the library to O'Gara Drive.
Good, okay, thank you.
On the libraries, going up, and then the library to the adult community center. The section will tie the library, adult community center to the schools and residents, to FEF return by, so it'll be on the right hand side.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, what you can see there is that twenty-five thousand dollars is from, would come from the capital reserve fund and a hundred and two thousand four hundred would come from federal funding, which represents twenty percent match for the town and eighty percent for the federal government. So, getting something like that is wonderful. We've, Kyle and Dawn have been very successful in obtaining those grants for us. We seem to be getting all the money for them.
Shh, shh.
Okay, so, then we go to, I'm going to go into twenty twenty-one while we're on this page. So, then, so we've, we're doing, for all intents and purposes, a, what you call it? A space needs study this year for the, for a public safety complex. And then, most likely in twenty twenty-one, which is not this upcoming year, but the following year, would be proposing to you a, to bond a, a public safety complex that would combine the, a new south fire station and the police station facility together on a piece of property that is located off the Continental Boulevard, currently owned by the school and dedicated to the town for that purpose. So, you can see there's, there's three amounts of money in two thousand twenty, twenty-one. In the blue is the amount that would come from the capital reserve fund. Then four million ninety-five thousand from bond, and that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's still there from the mall that is, that was for that purpose, that is, is, is still waiting for a home. So, then in, what?
I'm sorry, Peter, feel free, I'm in my world right here, sorry.
So, Eileen, this is just, this twenty-five thousand is the study phase?
There's two sums of, of twenty-five thousand dollars in this current year that we're in right now. So, there's a total of fifty thousand dollars that we have, and that's for a space needs study. It's the same thing that we did with the highway garage project where they, we kind of, they met with the employees and they met with, and, and looked at various spaces and sizes that, that were needed for the current staff and out toward the future.
Just then, and when we look at something like this and we budget ahead, do we take into effect, let's say, let's see, this gets approved, the new police station and a new south fire. That leaves two pieces of property, the old police station and the old south fire lots. Do we take into effect the sale of those, possibly those pieces of land that maybe to offset the cost?
Those discussions are all on the table and they all come out. So, we look under every rock, we see what any kind of grants that we can get. As you said, if you can throw in the sale of particular, those particular pieces of property, put them back on the tax rolls while you're putting, putting the other facilities to good use. So, so yes, that's all part of it, we, we leave notes still unturned when we're looking at a project like that because we understand that the town is, you know, they're, they're all, everyone, especially the council, very careful about going out and doing a bond.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, as you can see, stormwater drainage, we normally do that at two hundred thousand dollars every year. You see that every year we're, we're ramp, trying to ramp up the, the, the road infrastructure or the paving by fifty thousand dollars a year as we move forward. And then you see the Merrimack River boat access improvements in twenty twenty-one, which is showing a two hundred thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollars coming from the, from the road infrastructure capital reserve and, and two hundred thousand dollars for federal funding. Do you want more information on that? No, okay.
Cool.
Oh.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, that's, we're looking at down at the wastewater treatment plant and not on Griffin Street? Right here, yes.
Yes.
Okay, because it says formerly Griffin Street on the, and the reason why it's a fifty-fifty split in twenty twenty-one is because Fish and Game, it ties into when Fish and Game could potentially give us some money on a fifty-fifty split for that boat, right?
Okay. Here. You know, the, the, talking about this, and I wasn't present when they decided not to fund the Griffin Street site, but now that we have Sklar Waterfront Park and we're trying to develop that. I was recently down there with the Conservation Committee and the, the boat ramp there is collapsing, yet people want to still use it. Wouldn't it be wiser to work on that then? Work on, invest that money back into the boat ramp at Sklar Park as opposed to a separate area? And from what I understand, Nash was going to be putting a, their own ramp in just south of, maybe a mile south. So, I, it seems to me that now we've got Sklar Park, maybe we should think about putting that money into Sklar, the boat ramp, money into the boat ramp there as opposed to, you know, down by the wastewater treatment.
The problem is you can't make that turn coming into that, you cannot make that turn if you've got a guy that's towing a boat, not, I'm not, let's, let's just say just a regular boat with an outboard motor on it. That's a one hundred and eighty-degree turn, and then you've got, you've got, okay, you've got the clearance issue with the railroad bridge. You know, that can, that, that is a static piece. And what's been communicated to us in the past, which is why we looked at the wastewater treatment plant, is that it is, for the lack of a better term, an engineering nightmare down there, just to even make the turn. Not, not necessarily the boat ramp, okay, I'm not even talking about, talking about, in order for somebody to be able to access the boat ramp, they got to be able to get in there, and that's, that's a problem. Because absent, absent opening up the, the road on Route Three, which is state-owned, because it's, that's, that's, that's ours?
That's ours at that point.
Okay. So, that's, that's inside the urban con.
It's, it's something that.
Can I just ask something? Are you comparing and contrasting that, the, the Griffin Street and the, the one at the sewer treatment plant? Because that, it was my understanding that was, Griffin Street was the one that was difficult.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, you're just talking about Sklar Park.
Well, Sklar Park's right on, is.
That's Griffin Street.
Oh, it's on.
Yeah.
I, I, what size, I mean, size boat are we going to be dropping in by the wastewater treatment?
Well, I mean, that, again, we had that conversation regarding the depth, the, the depth is.
I would like to revisit it at the appropriate time, because I, I mean, I understand all the issues that are entailed. I chatted with Kyle probably four or five years ago about opening Route Three, he's hesitant, but I think we should have that discussion at some point. Eileen?
All I just wanted to say is, the, this is being proposed in, for nineteen twenty, but most likely would not happen anyway, and there would be significant discussion. This is, for all intents and purposes, still a placeholder. So, we would never put something in here and, and not have come back here and gone through all the different options and vetted the whole thing because it's, it's your plan. So, I just wanted to say that basically that what we're doing is we've been planning for some kind of a boat ramp, but we've kind of changed our minds back and forth because of various circumstances Bill was talking about. But, as I said, it's kind of, right at this point, a placeholder.
And that's because, the last conversation we had on it, I believe, was at our Goals Retreat, and, and that's what. And that's what we talked about at that moment. So that's why it's here.
But we've seen, we've, that this council has seen, before council, have, but we've seen concepts for not only the one at wastewater treatment, but concepts for what, for what a boat ramp could be at Griffin Street. And it's just, you know, I think we've, I don't wanna belabor the point, but we've, we've talked about it a lot. So I think that there needs, and I agree with you, I think we need to circle back and really have a, a knock 'em out, drag out as to what really is the, the, the future destination of the boat ramp. Because, you know, our former colleague, Dan Dwyer, makes, makes a great point. How can we live in Merrimack and sit on the Merrimack River and not have, not have boat ramp access to the Merrimack River? And it's, it's, it is so simple, it's, he's absolutely correct. So I think instead of belaboring the point, we really need to, you know, once we get beyond budget, really have a. And I'm not even talking about at, at retreat. I'm talking about literally agendering the item and actually having, having the conversation because I think it's, you know.
Well, that being said, well, it says here formerly Griffin Street. Should we just leave it unidentified just as a Merrimack River boat ramp access?
That's what we should, it should.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so the number sixteen, which is the last item on, on this particular page, is for spending some money to do boat ramp repairs at Depot Street, the Depot Street one.
Wow, that number even grew the last time I talked about it.
Well, you know, you know, it's collapsed, right?
It's really, it's, it's virtually non-existent from what it used to be there.
It's access.
It's access, I mean.
For our equipment and everything, yeah, yeah. But I mean, and I know it's a project now because again, most of it's washed away. Kyle and I were down there a few months ago. And so, so that would be good. And the person who brought it to my attention would still like that monument cleaned up if we could do that. So that'll be great. Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, so this is continued. Here are, oh, this is for future years. You don't have any years on the top of them. Okay, so what you see here is bridge replacement. As you know, US Three, DW Highway over Buzik Brook, a three-point-three-million-dollar project that is, we're trying to keep, we're, we're keeping a placeholder because we have been, we have been accepted into the program for federal funding for this one and another one. But it has not, it's not been formalized yet. So, what are you doing? Okay, for who? So anyway, so that one, the bridge replacement over Buzik Brook is planned for what year?
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay, so then again, stormwater drainage improvements every year for two hundred thousand dollars. Paving of DW Highway, as you know, we set aside fifty thousand dollars a year to pave various sections of, we do it in two sections, right? Two different sections every certain number of years to pave DW Highway. And so you see in here fifty thousand dollars most likely for engineering and then another, and three hundred thousand dollars to be done in what year?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four. So then there's the wire road intersection improvements that we've been talking about for a long time. Again, that's with federal funding, an eighty-twenty match. Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of which would come from the road infrastructure capital reserve fund, or in other words, money that we've saved. And then, then another nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars to be, to come from the federal government. Then you have the Daniel Webster sidewalk placeholder, which is another tap grant that we have applied for. And so we've put it as a placeholder because even though we've been, come to the top of the heap for our own region as being the number one project for our region, there, I believe there are eight or ten different regions that need to come together to come up with, I believe they have maybe five million dollars a year and probably twenty million dollars worth of projects that are being. So we're, we're still in the vetting process for that, but we're hopeful for that one too. And then there's a placeholder in there for another tap grant for a sidewalk from Joppa Road to Madeline Bennett, which again, it's an eighty-twenty split. Then we have a sewer line extension for Mayflower and McQuestion Sewer Basins. And those are very, very expensive and we always have to put them in here for you to take a look at because they're up at the top of the sewer master plan list. Oftentimes those aren't feasible because they don't serve enough people or have the, you know, have the payback to, to make it work out. So then the library, we wanted to give that to you. We wanted to make sure that you saw that, that they've put that placeholder in there, which they often do every year, to keep that in the forefront of your minds that they're gonna be looking for a new library facility within, at some point.
They actually started their own space needs this year.
Right.
So they started that, from what I understand, it went in front of the trustees. The trustees are reviewing that and then from there, as you'll see in twenty-one, twenty-two, there's a hundred thousand dollars. That's to start potentially drawing up plans and making their space, space needs a reality. And then coming forward at some point in the future with a bond. All right, and then community development came in on twenty-four, twenty-five. That's the master plan. So every ten years we're supposed to be starting the master plan and reviewing the master plan. And that'd be ten, oh, ten years already. So Tim Thompson, the community development director, wanted to put it on here and actually get it on the radar that it's in one of the last out years of it, but it's coming up and it's, it's, you know, five years, six years from now. So. As you look at the, the major capital expenditure funding sources, as you can see, capital reserve funds. What we'll be spending, capital reserve funds funded through the budget. Eileen talked about the, the paving of going up about fifty thousand dollars a year. We're trying to increase that about fifty thousand dollars a year. Bonds would be, the four, four-point-four-million-dollar bond would be for the safety complex. The two-point-three-million-dollar bond would be for the sewer expansion, and that's how we'd fund those. Flatline the road improvements at one-twenty-five. Even though our revenues for motor vehicles are going up, our number of registrations are staying pretty flat. Private donation is six-fifty. We discussed state aid, federal aid. And then the last one is, is user fees and bonds. And we had the discussion at the last meeting whether or not to go with one bond for wastewater or two bonds for the wastewater treatment plant. That's what that is talking about. We were not prepared to come back tonight to discuss one option or the other. During the budget process, we will be bringing back our, our recommendations once again to the council. There was a lot to look at and it isn't just looking at funding it. It's, can we extend, you know, we're looking at expanding the bonds. We're looking at the effects of, on all the sewer rate payers, not just the private residential homes. There, we have commercial and industrial rate payers too, and how's that gonna affect them? So there was a lot more detail that was needed and we couldn't get that in time for this meeting. So hopefully during the budget process, we'll be able to bring that forward. At the current time, we talked about the two bonds and the two bonds, thirteen-point-one million and then twelve million. In twenty twenty-one, that five hundred thousand dollars is in coordination with the FE Ever Turnpike widening. We have a sewer pipe that runs underneath the FE Ever Turnpike. And right now it's in a catch basin. And depending on what gets done, we might have to move it or might be able to keep it in the catch basin. But it's gonna cost roughly, we estimate about five hundred thousand dollars to have that pipe going across the FE Ever Turnpike when they do the widening project. And then, of course, in the pa, in your package, you have all the backup slides. All this will be put on the town website tomorrow, hopefully, so everybody can review the projects and see where we're at with, with the projects and the justification why they're in the CIP. Then we go with minor expenses, and I, I should have mentioned this before. The spreadsheets, as you know, are on eleven by, eleven by seventeen, and they go down numbering one through X, Y, Z. What I try to do is make it as easy as possible. If you're looking at the big eleven by seventeen numbering, the numbers that are there correspond to those big eleven by seventeen sheets. But we do have minor projects that are coming through and, and my, basically minor capital reserve and projects. There, we're looking, Building Grounds is looking for a one-ton dump truck in, in the nineteen twenty year. We're currently doing the town hall renovations in the current fiscal year. There's, needs to be some reconstruction of parking lots at the fire stations, the three fire stations. Some of the aprons are getting beat up pretty good. And to have our fire trucks hitting potholes as they're leaving is one thing we have to look at. So we're looking at some paving of those parking lots or overlay to those parking lots. Reconstructing, reconstructing the lower parking lot at PD, it's, it's getting long in the tooth as well as the adult community center. The reason why it's in twenty twenty-one, we'll have a better idea if we're moving forward or not with the safety complex. If we're moving forward with the safety complex, that number will reduce. We still have to do the adult community center. Communication capital reserve, the backup councils for fire, is in the, the capital reserve in twenty twenty-one, about fifty thousand dollars. And then a replay, a CAD RMS server replacement dispatch upgrade of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the actual computer system that is used. It isn't the upgrade we just did in the dispatch with the equipment. It's actual software. It's an upgrade to software. And that, we are one of the only towns that uses a different software than the rest of the state. And this is looking to go, continue with the rest of the state.
Peter, and I, you know, I'm glad to see this because the software, it's called Crime Track. It is no longer supported. It's no longer used. It is extremely outdated. This is something that's long overdue, so I'm glad to see that. I can, I can attest to the fact that it's not user-friendly anymore. It's not what standards are within other, other agencies throughout the state.
So it's not the had. It's not the hardware, it's the software.
It's the software.
It's a software upgrade. And what we've been paying, most recently, has been hardware, is all hardware.
And one of the biggest parts of the expenses is you have to, you have records that the police department has to have and they have to have it brought forward, so, you know, and stored. So that, that, that's part of that cost, but.
And initiation, the transferring of data, you're talking about?
Yeah.
As, as we move on to the next slide, basically fire, fire, the fire department.
Well, if you could just tell me the pool car?
The pool car was in community development that we put in the budget. We did buy one at, it's sitting down there. It's a Chevy. A Chevy Malibu.
And, and I'm good with that, of course, but I'm just wondering why we didn't, just as we rotate through cars.
Um, the, the last car we had was, was one of the old Crown Vics. And we got it with a lot of miles on it. The air conditioning worked, the transmission was slipping. We did this a couple of years ago, in two thousand twelve-ish. We bought a Focus for the building department.
I remember the Focus, yeah.
And that car has lasted. It's the same concept. This car, the Crown, the Crown Vic that they had is, is not just for community development, it's for the whole town hall. And when tax collector was sending people up to Concord, car broke down. The Crown Vic broke down, so we thought we needed a more reliable car. And we came through on state bid, actually worked a deal out with the Chevrolet, and we got a two thousand nineteen for a two thousand seventeen state bid price. So, but that was the reasons why we went with new and we figured it'd last at least twenty years and be reliable.
The Focus is still going strong?
The Focus is still going strong, both of them.
And I guess I, I brought this up last year. I mean, we're gonna, and, and for reasons the police department cycles through, they have to bring in three new vehicles because they run up the mileage, at least three. And they gotta come off the road. But they are usable. So why aren't we giving the, the, that department one of the, the sedans to come off or one of the SUVs? Those are serviceable vehicles.
They, they are serviceable, but the, the progression is from police to fire non-command vehicles, such as for their building departments and things of that sort. Then those vehicles get pushed down to the rest of the town.
We can't spare one SUV?
Right now, the way we looked at the schedule, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, you've got two or three this year?
Two this year, and they both went to building and health because the Crown Vics were falling apart and they're getting stuck in the construction site.
Chief, you have to step up. Sorry about that. If you could step, sorry about that.
Oh, we had two this year, SUVs. They were both given to building and health inspector. And the reason for that is the Crown Vics that we have were, the maintenance was increasing and the ability to get in and out of construction sites was difficult. They were getting stuck all the time. We have to send tow trucks to get, to pull them out. And we currently still have a fire inspector and a, a building inspector that has the old Crown Vics that we're still having a problem with.
And that's two, but you know the police are gonna recycle out at least three, and if we, we're gonna touch upon that.
Well, this year, I, I think from what I understand, the year coming up.
During their cycle.
They're recycling out the sedans that they say are falling apart. So there won't be no cars available in the next process because they're gonna keep those and cycle them to themselves.
They're falling apart?
Ah, it's, you know what I mean, nothing to come down.
Chased her to detectives, so they didn't get a lot of hard miles. They weren't, they weren't.
I don't know.
What, what we were told is that as they cycle out these next round of cars, they're gonna be cycling out those detective cars off, off, from them and going to the bigger.
All right, but I agree with the chairman. I mean, I think that, I don't know, I think we could spare one of those cars that comes out of the PD. I don't know.
Again, it's something we'll talk about in the future.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, chief.
So, as we go with the fire, the, the fire capital reserve, as you see the computer apparatus. We were purchasing, we, we have a replacement schedule. We're replacing the computer apparatus in the fire vehicles over the next three years of fifteen thousand dollars apiece. There's an equipment trailer in twenty twenty-one. Some upgrade to the SCBA that we just received in, in twenty twenty-one that we'd have to do. Tox gas monitoring equipment in twenty twenty-one. Finishing up in nineteen twenty, three years of buying large diameter hose and fire suppression hose for the replacement. And then some optocom equipment that needs to be, and that's really in there and for maintenance on the optocom systems. As we talked about some of the vehicles that are coming through, they're in the capital project improvement plan to have vehicles in the fire department for these to get it. But as we just talked about, they're gonna be cycled out. So those will probably be zeroed out in the budget process because we are cycling cars through the system. But we, we wanted to put it out there that it's, they're getting cars, they're just getting used police cars instead and it won't cost anything in the budget as we cycle through. Then we move on to highway. In highway, we try to, we're buying a couple dump trucks this year. We're looking at a pickup truck in two thousand nineteen, twenty. Looking at landscape, a landscape trailer. And right now what happens with our lawnmower equipment is that during the winter time, it gets stored. And sometimes it gets stored outside because right now we didn't have the inside storage. But even when we go to the old facility being turned over, that's really gonna be for our big six-wheel dump trucks. It's not gonna be for, for these lawnmowers that we have. And they're about a twelve-thousand-dollar lawnmower. What we're looking to do is buy a trailer and then not only have them, but they'll be inside and out of the weather. So hopefully they'll last longer than the normal three to five years that we get out of them. Looking at buying two six-wheel dump trucks on the schedule in two thousand twenty, twenty-one. A one-ton dump, another six-wheel dump, a trailer, a three-quarter ton pickup, another landscaping trailer because we have two trailers that we'll be replacing for the four X marks that we do have, and another one-ton dump, and that's all in twenty twenty-one. There are some lawnmowers that we're looking at purchasing in nineteen twenty-two, X mark lawnmowers. And then another one in twenty twenty-one, cement mixer for four thousand. And we bought a hot box trailer to, to tow the hot box around. I'm gonna skip eighty-six pond dredging. I wanna come back to that. In twenty twenty-one, we're talking about tennis court resurfing at Wasserman Park, and that's the fill. And that's to fill the cracks and actually come in and, and potentially resurface the tennis courts to make them last longer. We did this project, I wanna say almost ten years ago now, and it's a time to do it again. Patrol vehicles, in nineteen twenty, we're looking at replacing four because they do have ten vehicles. So it's a three, three, four cycle. So they're looking at replacing four and cycling out those vehicles to the detectives and captains of both, uh, um, cars, and then going back to three vehicles in two thousand twenty twenty-one. They talked about replacing the Harley Davidson, um, in twenty twenty-one. And then, uh, an administrative vehicle, uh, in, uh, either a chief or a deputy chief vehicle in twenty twenty-one. And then, of course, we did the crime scene vehicle replacement. A solid waste, uh, we're taking a year off for a trailer, but we're going back to, uh, a trailer in twenty twenty-one. Uh, we're buying a new, uh, tractor trailer to pull the trailers. A forklift would be in twenty twenty-one. Uh, a loader for the, for the, um, solid waste is, uh, is getting, we have a John Deere up there and it's getting costly to repair, so we're looking at replacing that in nineteen twenty. Uh, skid steer loader. And then, uh, in technology, uh, we're looking at licensing and, uh, equipment upgrades for thirty thousand dollars over the next several years. Those licenses are the Microsoft licenses and server licenses and things of that sort as well as if we have to replace a server. Telephone upgrade we're doing this current year. And then the voting booths we did last year. And it looks like we're not doing, until a better product comes out, we're, we're holding off on, on looking at them. A total to be spent out of, uh, the, the, underneath miners, be, combination between capital reserve and, uh, out of budgets, about one point one million dollars in nineteen twenty and one point two million dollars in twenty twenty-one. Oh, I forgot to talk about Wasserman Park, pond dredging. We call it pond dredging, it's, it's the Wasserman Park and, uh, the, the Natick Lake, dredging of Natick Lake. There are two options that we can do. And I combined both of those options from talk of last year. One option is to come in with, uh, an excavator and dredge Natick Lake and take this, the muck out and just do that. And don't really repair the beach and have the roots and everything else that's there. And that's about six, about fifty-seven to sixty thousand dollars just to take the muck out is what we're estimating. It's gonna be similar to the operation like they did, um, at the Merrimack River for Penachuk where they might have to bring in a, not a barge, but build temporary docks to put the excavator on to pull the muck out because we're going out about a hundred and twenty feet offshore at, in the deepest part. So the reach is only twenty-five feet, so they're gonna have, that's why it's that expensive. The second portion is building, um, taking out those pine trees. And by taking out those pine trees and taking out that root base, that's holding the shoreline in place. So when we do that, we gotta build a retaining wall and resurface where we take out the pine trees. That's about forty thousand dollars. There potentially could be some savings from there, uh, when we have done a lot of the culverts replacements on Wilson Hill Road and here on old Route, um, Route Three in front of, uh, Kincone, there were some granite blocks that we got. So we're looking to see if we have enough of those granite blocks to build the retaining wall out of those granite blocks. Dawn did a great job salvaging those and telling the contractor, no, you can't have them, they're going to our highway garage. And, uh, so we have them and we're hoping that we can repurpose them. If we repurpose those blocks, we could save about between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars potentially on the project, doing it. But right now, if we had to build a retaining wall and dredge Natick Lake, it's looking at about ninety-five thousand dollars next year to do the, that project. And that doesn't include any dock replacement.
And this was a project that actually was budgeted at a higher price and, and we council voted that down last year. And it's come in, the Parks and Rec directors come in with a, and TPW with a, a lower price. And, and I agree, it needs to be done, it, it has to be done. It, that, that, you know, the trees and everything else, so I'm.
You'll be advocating for that.
I am, thank you.
Alrighty.
And then we do have other, it's not just general fund in, in this process. We do have things that we need for sewer fund as, in addition to, to the plant and, and facility, compo screener for three hundred and five thousand dollars in nineteen twenty. A new loader in, uh, two thousand twenty twenty-one, uh, to replace the, the third cat loader that we have. Going back, I, I would like to tell the council that we had, um, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars budgeted for two cat loader replacements in the current fiscal year. Uh, we were able to get, um, through, through the work of the gentleman down at wastewater treatment plant. He was able to buy two used loaders instead of two new loaders, saving the town significant money. And, uh, we were able to buy two used for the price of one new loader. So he, he did work that out. And then we're looking at doing some pump replacements.
Question, Paul? We're having a little discussion here. Obviously wastewater treatment, does that have to go in a separate warrant article?
No.
I hear a yes and a no. Yes and no?
Wastewater treatment, we, we combined with our operating budget. And you are agents to expend these funds, so they would be combined in the operating budget.
But with the new rule, do we have to have a separate?
Only deposits have to go on, only the deposits have to go on.
Which is the capital reserve fund.
Capital reserve and deposits.
So this does not have to.
The expenses just don't because you guys are agents to expend. Now that, now that being said.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I was just gonna say, I told them so.
You can tell, say you told them so.
Okay.
The only one that I have found through my research, through all your capital reserve funds that never gave you as agents to expend, from what I can find, is the fire capital reserve fund. So that is also gonna be a warrant article this year, asking the town if they would allow you to become agents to expend on the fire. So the, uh, the small hoses and, and the small purchases that we're making out of capital fund in nineteen twenty would have to go on a separate warrant article.
There is gonna be a lot of education, Pete.
Yes.
To your comment.
And we, we do.
There's gonna be a lot.
We do plan on doing a lot, there, there definitely will definitely be a lot of education costs. It's gonna be a lot of things that people haven't seen before and they're gonna wanna know why.
For a long time.
So that voter's guide is gonna be very important this year with a lot of explanations.
I mean, I really think we're gonna have to do, go on the road, go to other rotary and other places and also do some cable stuff.
Well, I think it was equally difficult though, when our budget showed, you know, twenty-five million this year and next year it's showing thirty million and having to do that explanation, it's always been a road show, if you will.
You're right, yeah. But even for people who really know about it, this is so different now.
Yes, like the old days.
And then the last one is, is the media cable television fund. And we are planning to do a couple of projects this year. The big one is the eighty thousand dollars for, uh, local head-end equipment. And that's to help, uh, be able to transmit in high definition. And, uh, that, that's really why it went from sixty to ninety-five and then it's going back down to roughly sixty again. So the big one was the cable, cable, um, head-end equipment. So looking at the capital reserve funds for these years and, and the spending is this year in eighteen nineteen, we're spending about one point eight million dollars. Next year, we're proposing about one point six. And the following year, we're proposing a little more, about one point seven million dollars in, in spending. We try to look at keeping it as, as level as possible, um, with, with the expenditures. So there aren't those big spikes. And the same thing with deposits. So if you keep your spending level, your deposits won't, we're trying to smooth out the deposits to, so that there aren't those big spikes in years in tax rates. That's all that I have and I didn't have prepared for you.
And you don't have what?
That's all we have prepared. If you have any other questions about anything else, you'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Everybody good?
To be continued.
To be continued, the major, um, the major portion of this capital reserve will be going to the, um, sorry. We'll be going to the planning boards next week, uh, Friday. And then I believe the same week of the fourth, say eighteenth, we'll be discussing it like that.
Thanks, Paul. All right, next item under new business, uh, finance director Paul McCallie will review the key financial information of the quarter ending September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Good thing I like to sound my voice. Good evening, I come before you as part of the charter. I have to come and give a quarterly update or the charter states that the finance, uh, fi- quarterly update to the council every, every quarter in the fiscal year. I am finishing up the audit for two thousand seventeen eighteen, that ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Hopefully that will be done before the new fiscal year, uh, new calendar year. So around the end of December, we should be getting that, uh, just reviewing the, uh, management discussion and analysis portion of it. So you'll be seeing the audit. I do wanna say for my fourteen years here, uh, the finance department in the town received an unqualified opinion. For the last five years, our management, uh, our management notes are things have, have, there aren't any significant, uh, findings from the auditors and that's been the case for the last five years. There's a lot of new pronouncements coming up in the government accountings that, you know, that they write on. I think they're almost a page along in the management report telling us about this gasby and that gasby. So those are in there, but for all intents and purposes, it has been a very clean report for the last five years.
Job well done.
Thank you. The, um, first quarter, um, findings is health insurance costs. We look at health insurance costs because that's a, that's a major, uh, expense for the town. Last year, we spent seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, this year in the first quarter, we spent seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's for a couple of different reasons. Uh, one reason is that last year, for the first half of last fiscal year, we still had a couple of unions transitioning to our current health insurance plan. So that's why that cost was up. And everybody now is transitioned to the new health insurance plan where we have the one thousand, three thousand dollar deductible and hire office visits. So that's why our, we see a little bit of savings coming down for health insurance in this year, in the first quarter. New Hampshire retirement has gone up a little bit and, uh, for fire, uh, one reason, I'll, I'll speak of fire. They went up a little bit, uh, from their figures, um, of, uh, of the, uh, two thousand seventeen eighteen by about three or four thousand dollars. The reason being is that in last fiscal year seventeen eighteen, we were still in the process of hiring those eight firefighters. Now they are on board and you'll see that on the next slide when we talk about overtime. Group one, which is all other employees, we had some vacancies last year. And those vacancies have been filled as well. So, uh, that's why there's a little bit, it's all been budgeted for, it's all within budget. And then the police department is also the same, they had some vacancies. And due to some of the overtime, uh, that we, that the council approved for that new unit, that has increased the, uh, New Hampshire retirement system for them. Overtime comparison is pretty much, has gone up, uh, across a little bit. And the, the big reduction is, is the fire department. Fire department has, because of those eight people, has seen our use, less use of, of retirement. Police department's up a little bit with overtime and that's due to the new unit as we discussed. And everybody else is pretty much stayed pretty constant to where we've been all along. Revenues, revenues continue to, uh, to, to look in a positive note. Auto registrations are going up.
It's incredible to me.
We're keeping a close eye on this though because of, because of what's going on with, uh, with, uh, everything in the world and everything else starting in January. So we've been keeping a close eye on this to see how it portrays in going forward.
Well, you keep building in town, the more people are gonna come, more registrations are going up.
That too.
Just saying.
Cash, interest, the, uh, interest is going up because the feds have increased the rates. And, uh, your new town treasurer, Tom Bowlen, has done a great job. He, uh, he's really come into my office a couple of times and said, hey, uh, this bank isn't stepping up to the table. We can get better rates if we just bring it in-house or we give it to a different bank. And I'm like, go for it. So he's really keeping a close eye on our interest and, and our money. And it's really worked out a lot, it worked out great for me, having somebody in the office that, that, they look at that and they look at it on a monthly basis and even sometimes a weekly basis depending on where we are. Even some of the contracts that we have out there with some banks, he calls them up and says, you didn't pay us right, you owe us money. So he's been really on top of, uh, the interest rates and it shows that the interest rates are going up. And the cash that we're getting from are going up. Uh, revenues are healthy, appropriations, we're well within budget on both of them. Our appropriations right now, we are, like I said, we're well within budget. I do not see a problem in this fiscal year with appropriations or, or revenues. Like always though, we're, this is just the first quarter snapshot, we keep an eye on them. It's not like we just put the, put these reports away and take them out every, every quarter. We, uh, weekly, we're reviewing our appropriations, we're looking at our salary accounts. We're looking at a lot of different things to see where we might end up at the end of the year forecasting. So, um, and then as well as the revenues because if, if something does change, I will be the first to know besides my, after me, and then sure, she'll inform the council at that point. Any questions about any other thing else?
Everybody else in? Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Next item on the agenda minutes for November fifteenth. Anybody?
I'd like to make a motion.
You will?
Yes, I would, cause Council Boyd is, was, was absent from this one. I'd like to motion to approve the minutes, town council minutes of Thursday, November fifteenth, as written. I did review and I didn't see anything.
motion by Council Harrington, seconded by Council Albert. No further discussion? And I'll call a question, others in favor of the minutes of November fifteenth, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Me. Three oh two.
Zero two.
Three is zero two.
With Tom Thornton and, uh, Phil Boyd, uh, in the abstention. Comments from the press? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be remiss if I did not extend publicly my condolences to the family of our former forty-first president, the United States, George Bush. In nineteen eighty-eight, he was the first person I voted for for president. And I got the opportunity several years ago to visit his library. I learned a lot about the man, the human being, his work with the Americans with Disability Act, the Clean Air Act. There was a lot of things that he did in his four years as president of the United States that, you know, I think would, would amaze a lot of people. And I think what he, what he accomplished outside of being in the White House, I think deserves accolades as well. And he lived a very long and rich life. And I think this country is, is a better country because of his statesmanship and because of his leadership. So my thoughts and my prayers go out to the Bush family. Tomorrow is the anniversary of Pearl Harbor and I just wanted to bring that to people's attention that we still have, we still have veterans and survivors of Pearl Harbor out there. And, um, it's kind of ironic with President Bush passing away, just, you know, the greatest generation. You know, they're, they're slowly, um, passing away. And I think we need to be reminded to people in our community of this exceptional generation and the, and the extraordinary sacrifices and commitment that they made so that all of us can be here as, as liberty-minded, freedom-loving people, as, as United, United States citizens. So I just wanted to bring that to the community's attention. So, I just wanted to bring that to the community's attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. I, actually, I just didn't know, if Eileen, did you wanna speak to the, you'd mentioned in the savings of the two pieces of equipment that were, did you wanna do that at next meeting? Okay, very good, that'll be good.
Yeah, I, sorry.
No.
I just, as you know, next meeting, you'll be getting your budget books and your USB drives. Does anybody have, for the councilors, we usually do Monday, Thursday, would anybody have a heartburn if we went to a Wednesday, Thursday schedule for a budget review?
Well, it's two nights together versus...
Whatever works for everybody.
You know, if that's the case...
It's probably different, because they have meetings Monday nights also.
So, if, if it, think about it, it'll only be the first week of January when we start the process, because it'd be January 7 and 8, I believe, is the regular council meetings on the 8th of January.
January 10th is a regular...
Yeah, so it would be the 9th and 10th, and then it would be the 14th, and the 13th and 14th would be then, no.
No, it isn't, I'm sorry.
It'd be the following week.
16th and 17th.
16th and 17th.
16th, 17th, nine in time.
And I'll make sure the 2019 calendars get up here, we have them, so it would be just those two weeks, it'd be this, the 9th and 10th, and then the following, two weeks later, would be the Wednesday, Thursdays, so if, if the council doesn't have any under, heartburn with that, let us, if they do, let Eileen know, so we'll be presenting the schedule going forward, and I like to give the departments some notice of when they would be presenting. Also, who would like a budget book, binder itself, because everybody gets a USB with the budget in it, but if people want a binder, I make binders as well.
I never use one, but I'll tell you, I don't mind.
Well, it, it just, just for my staff, I can make, I can make seven, I can make 10, it's just, how many do I need to make, kinda deal, so I can order those supplies.
I, I used it electronically the past few years, and I've found...
And Tom uses it electronically. I will, I will make one of each, because I do extra binders anyways.
Could you do me a favor?
Yes.
It would just make my life a little simpler, if you could freeze the pains...
Up top?
Right, because I do it all the time, and I just, it's a pain in the neck.
When I, when I save that down, I will be able to do that, I understand, I can do that, in Excel.
I knew you could do it, you would, that'd be great.
But the budgets will be coming out next, the presentation will be given to the council on the 20th. Yeah, Merry Christmas. Your Christmas reading with your family to go over it. Sorry, thank you very much.
Real quick, I guess my comment would be, my little two-year-old grandson was watching me on TV tonight, I got the text, so, and he got so excited, he's the only kid in town who gets excited over that stuff. He wasn't falling asleep, is that why he was watching? He was loving it, but apparently, I just caught the glimpse.
My brother's still waiting on the TV.
I haven't told my wife about the TV, then she'll know when my meetings are over, right? Anyhow, if, anything further? Nothing? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Boyd, seconded by Tom Thornton, all those in favor say aye. Opposed abstain, opposed, so thank you very much.